This, of course, is the last meeting for over the milit rate, the possible of a milit rate increase, thank God, as we go forward. The, I want to run over, this is what was started the meeting off here in the last few times, and I'll go ahead and run it, run through it right quick. The increases that we're looking at, that everybody's looking at, elected officials, department heads, is the health insurance increase has gone from about 10 to about 15 percent. The preliminary fiscal year 2017 budgets reflect increases of general government, 120,000; judicial, 253,000; sheriff, 548,000; EMS, 911; EMA and fire, 159,000; public works, 243; culture and recreation, 44,000; housing and development, 44,000. It comes up to a total of $1,411,000. Now, this is a 20, this is the, the draft or the proposed 2017 budget from all the elected officials. That's what this is, right here. These have not been approved, and we haven't got into the budget process. The milit rate we're talking about tonight is for 2016. And what's got some people confused, if I may, back in 1988, best we can figure, it kind of got flipped on how milit rate is set. The milit rate that is set today is for the 2016 budget that we're already in. You would think you would set the milit rate first, and then work through that, through your budget for that year. For some reason, in 1988, I can't remember who the commissioner was at that time, this thing got flipped, and we don't know. Alan tried to look it up, viewers tried to look it up to see exactly why it did that. We don't know. But anyway.
I've talked to previous commissioners recently, and previous finance director, and they said it was not like that when the last commissioner left office. It had never been like that. Alan, never been like that. Alan?
Last year, I remember that we did that, was the last year of Billy Newton's administration, there was a, we budgeted a year out, basically.
But anyway, that's what we're going, we always budgeted a year out. So best we can see, and with the computer programming, or with the computer websites that we've got, that's what it is. But that being said, that's what we've got to deal with. At this time, Ms. Fay, you want to give them a preview of what we're looking at? You should have got a handout of this right here, and most of y'all hopefully got a handout of this right here. If you haven't, we've got a few more left. And this is a milit rate, right side by side comparison, neighbors, county, neighboring counties, but it's also on the back sheet, has got that. If it goes up one mil, it'll give you a comparison of a, of a $150,000 house, a $200,000, and a $300,000, what the increase would be on that for one mil.
Do you have any extra?
I have, I have. Some of y'all asked quite a few questions here the last time. This information here is a state law requirement. Senior tax, school senior tax exemption is in this pamphlet, right here. So if you look at paragraph two, it gives you how you can, what the process is to start working towards a school tax exemption for Pickens County, who you need to talk to. All right, Ms. Fay, I'm on it. Have you got anything else that I covered, that I covered at all?
He covered it all.
Okay. Ms. Becky, you want to, you want to go ahead and run this along?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we, well, we got, we got a lot of the elected officials here, so we're going to go ahead and open it up for questions. Yes, sir?
Me?
Yes.
I'm Robert Teale. You've been sole commissioner for 10 out of the last 12 years?
I've been sole commissioner for, up until 2010, and we went to three-person board now. Yes.
Okay. Kind of pretty much are still, to be honest with you. So if you don't like the way the budget's arranged, good God, why couldn't you have the gap changed?
The only, all the way you can change it is the fact that you'd have to have two taxing cycles in one year.
Okay. One time, you did one time?
Just one time. But you'd have to have two taxing cycles in one year.
They're actually be changed, right?
It would probably need to be changed, get it back on.
You indicated in the last meeting that you, you inherited that.
It wasn't here.
Well, if you have the power to change it, let's change it then.
Well, as long as everybody's agreed that we need to do two, two taxing cycles in one year.
Can I explain to them what's up with the finances? I mean, I've explained it before.
It's good, quick.
When you start a year out, when, in 2004, Billy Newton handed him a proposed budget for the following year. We had some audit, now Fay, you correct me if I'm wrong, six to eight million dollars in the bank. When you start that year with six to eight million dollars in the bank, you don't have to have any money to start the year. We collected our taxes in February. We didn't have to pay them till February. And then when you continuously, '06, '07, '08, '09, '10, you continuously spend more than you take in every year. The expenditures outweigh the revenues by somewhat 1.5 to 8 million dollars, you get behind. Then you start borrowing these things called cans, and you started out at a million and a half, two million, three million, four million. Then you have to start collecting your taxes that current year to pay that can off. So that's when we got behind, because we were spending.
That is not completely true. Yes, sir?
It is.
Well, tell the truth, then.
That is a truth.
Well, you just said it wasn't true!
I said that wasn't completely true.
You don't even know what you said.
I went to Ingalls yesterday, and I wanted to get six states. They told me the price off. I didn't have that much money. Well, I said, "It's in my budget." What did I get? Well, listen, Mr. Weber, you'll have to cut your budget back and take ground base. What is wrong with us trimming our budget? I know a lot of you in here that lived a lot different a few years ago, and on. I don't ever hear anybody want to cut the budget, it's just, "Give me more money, give me more money." Let's get back to making ground base for a while. I eat it now. It won't kill you.
The private sector has had to sacrifice over the last...
Hard, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Do you want me?
The private sector, self-employed people have had to cut back and cut back, and yes, our health insurance has gone up, but the government, and this is probably why people like Trump or whoever are making a big deal, because the government expands, and they don't cut back, they don't take pay cuts. We've taken pay cuts for years, and nobody else is taking pay cuts. And it is, it's at a point that it's not fair, it's just not fair.
No.
You know, I had a couple of questions, but, and this was, these are budget questions. It sounds like the increases are because of increases in health insurance.
Yeah.
Or that's what the papers say. So my question is, what are, what are, is an employee's premium for their health insurance insured? And what is their deductible for their health insurance?
Don't know what every employee does, but we got to break down and see what that is, because we reworked the healthcare policy here, even though, even if you got over 50 employees by the Obama plan, you have to furnish insurance to your employees. But Fay, you want to, you want to break that thing down?
Sure. Right now, the, the total county annual...
Use the mic.
Okay. The total annual county expenditures for health insurance, for all the employee insurance, is around 2.7 million. So we're looking at a 10 to 15 percent increase, so that's about $270,000.
How much of that does an employee themselves pay?
The employee, if they have employee-only coverage, they pay $52.54 every month.
Out of what?
Out of, out of 641, county pays 588. The employee and spouse, they pay 279.44 a month, and the total monthly is 1346, that's 79 percent that the county pays. Employee and child, the county pays 82 percent, the employee pays 18 percent, which is $226. Employee and family, the county pays 76 percent, and the employee pays 24 percent, which is $470,000.
See, this is the problem. I have a, do we know what the deductible is? Is it 1500, 1200, 900?
Of course, Paul, Paul.
Before the policy...
What is, Paul, what is the deductible?
It's 1500.
1500.
1500. To give you an example, my wife has a $6,300 deductible, and she pays $500 a month.
A month?
A month. I have a $3,500 deductible, and I pay 700 a month for my health insurance.
You make it $12 an hour?
I make it a little bit, or whatever.
It doesn't matter, Donnie, that's no point. My employees working in jail, or my $12 an hour, they cannot afford health insurance, and they're not going to work for us in the jail doing the job that they have to do at $12 an hour. They're not going to stay.
We'll wait the rest of us and get a second job.
They do, they work for two or three jobs a week.
There's three levels of health insurance in the private sector. There's those of us that are stuck on Medicare with no option. So we have Medicare. There is the family, anybody from, say, let's just pick 28 to 63, with children, college, and everything else. And just like this gentleman and this lady are speaking, they're paying probably half to two-thirds of their health insurance, their deductibles are off the charts, 900, 100, $15,000, whatever. And then there's the younger people who don't pay any health insurance because they can't afford it, and they will pay fine. So in the private sector, we don't have the option of paying $52 and having our employer pick up 600. I mentioned this two years ago, when we were going through that budget review. Government employees don't get a better deal than their employer. If the insurance costs are going up, then the government employee has to put that bill. Or you get a different plan, has a much higher deductible. It's absurd that people in the private sector have gotten their brains beat in it, and just like this government study where we're wondering what's different counties, where are this $40,000 study, it didn't take into account anything about the taxpayer and the private sector. So we just look at government versus government versus government like the real world doesn't exist. And the county employee, no, I feel bad for you if you make it $12 an hour, and you've got a, a bill, but that's puts you in the same boat as all the rest of us. Instead of in a boat where you're covered, and as increases come on, you get covered again, and the taxpayer pays that as well as their own, this is absurd. There is no way in the world that the employees of the private sector taxpayer get a better deal than that private sector taxpayer. And this county has paid no attention to that for the entire eight years since the economy collapsed. Rob, I'll give you credit, you have cut, in the county, you've cut the number of employees. You guys have tried to work that a little bit. Maybe some of the other groups have as well, but I don't think so. I think it has been pretty much just within your group. But this, this idea that we are in a bottomless wallet, we've tried to point that out for years now, and nobody's paid attention to it. Other counties have taken their milit rates down, they have reduced property taxes. This county has gone up three times before this one in the past eight years. And there is no reality there. For the taxpayer, every, every dollar that we get when we raise milit rates goes to something for a government employee. It doesn't go to roads, it doesn't go to water, it doesn't go to infrastructure. We have splosts in sales taxes for those, which we should never have needed, but we just keep saying, "Okay, taxpayer, here, we're going to hit you with some more sales tax, we'll pass another sploß." But all of these property taxes, and everything that we get from the government in Atlanta, when the state doles out the various income tax and everything else they do, it goes to government employees. So we've got this thing completely out of whack, we have got the dog wagging, I mean, the tail wagging the dog, and that's got to stop. This is nonsense.
Yes, ma'am.
As an employee, I want to tell you that when they, when we look at salaries, whether it's a new employee coming in or existing employee, our, the money that the county pays for our insurance is included in that salary. So like Donnie was saying, it's $12 an hour, then you add that 600, 500, or whatever, the insurance, and that's your salary. We don't make a lot of money. Our same employees are working two and three jobs. Our same employees, including me, are paying these property tax that you're complaining about. So you have to look at both sides. We're paying the taxes, but when they set our salaries, it includes the insurance benefits. And I think that's what people are not understanding. You think we get a salary, and then we get the insurance on top of it. It's not, it's all in one.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, part of my concern is with medical insurance, that we're all talking about employees and individual people on Medicare, whatever. And it all goes into part of, what really jumped out at me was the sheriff's office wants more than double the next highest request, $548,000 to go to the sheriff. Now, there might be, obviously, there are some descriptions of what it's going for, but the inmates' medical care budget is a huge part of that. They're doubling the nurses' hours from eight to 16, the, which of course, we increased. They're expecting a new medical staff salary contract at an increase to be $300,000. It's not just a percentage, it's $300,000 probably to go again to something that's a medical thing. The medical needs also of, in terms of prescriptions and medical supplies for the inmates, rise from $14,500 to a proposed $40,000. We're talking about 135 inmates, and the population of Pickens County is 29,600 people. There's something wrong with that. I, I say you must, please do not vote on this proposal until somebody takes a good hard look at these requests, and how insane that is compared to everything else.
Well, ma'am, you're welcome to come by the jail. I will share with you all those numbers, and I will listen to any suggestions that you have.
Well, they did happen just last night. You can't just do that in one fell swoop. One year, all of a sudden, it goes up 13.84.
This is something we have been working on our entire year.
Well, maybe you need to ask, have meetings with the citizens, have them, some experts. I don't know what the answer is, but I don't, I don't think this is the right answer.
And, and, and everybody, you know, this, what you see there is 2017 proposed budget, proposal, we didn't get to that, working those details out yet. Hopefully, we can have some cuts in that when we get there, that we're all going to sit there and work toward that point. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I would like to touch back on benefits, because we heard an hourly rate, an hourly rate back here, not how much they're making, but the fact that the benefits are included in the salary rate. Does Pickens County, I guess, has pension plans?
We do.
Is it fully funded?
No. What we did, we changed, we changed the pension rate this year for all the employees, because it used to be Pickens County taxpayers paid 100 percent of that pension plan. We redid it this year and got it set up to where they've got some skin in the game, to where it's taken some of the liability off the county taxpayers that we go through and get this, as people retire, get out of the plan, everything's going to be cleared up, and then they'll have more money, and that's the percentage.
Do you also have 401K plan?
It's not called 401K, it's a...
It's a 457.
457.
Is it in addition?
That's what the new employees have.
Hard.
Is it in addition?
No. Employees that were here prior to January 1st of last year were included in the defined country, or defined benefit. Now, we're, anybody that came in July, or January 1st after is in defined contribution, and anybody that was in the defined benefit plan started paying 5 percent of gross salary.
And my point is that Pickens County is a barely four county. We don't have jobs that have pensions, or this type of pay-as-you-go retirement plan. All we have is one or a week contributing. We don't have health insurance, many of the companies here don't pay insurance because they can't afford it. But county employees have pensions, they have paid health insurance, they, they have decent salaries that are more than most people in the county bank. At $12.50, that's probably more than half the people in the county bank per hour, and we don't get those benefits. So now you're asking us to pay our increase in health insurance, because ours is going to be just as big, if not bigger, and pay your increases in health insurance. So something's just totally wrong with that situation.
And to give you, give you a head, Pickens County's a tier four county, which means we're one of the richest 16, have 159 counties, one of the richest 19 counties in the state. Why, I don't know, other than, you know, a few areas maybe that skew the numbers, but Pickens County is considered a rich county, tier four is one of the richest counties in the state. We've argued, we've argued with DCA by, by the tier status, because that does lift to some of the grants and all that we receive, either through the school system or through the county, on account of those issues, but they will not capitulate.
Yeah, go. My question's for Becky. You remember back in 2012, that first tax increase, me and you talked, and I said, "The county's finances is in a, in a whirlwind." Well, we had a finance director to resign. We hired Ms. Fay, I'm glad she's here, she's been here about two weeks, she turned in her resignation. We had a meeting with all the department heads, y'all did that morning, and found out what was really going on in the county, that our, our finances was in a pickle. That evening, we had a commissioners meeting, and I sat, I think I sat by Donnie. And Donnie looked at me, and he said, "You was right," said, "We're in a pickle." At that point, y'all decided to keep revenues as they was, and we were going to cut a million dollars out of the spending. If we would have stayed on track with that, it would have took us roughly 12 years to get our fund balance back to where it was going to be. What has you and Jerry done to see that that million dollars was cut after we left?
Rob, can I have a...
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for the question. We did not actually end up cutting that full amount that year. I think we ended up somewhere around 600, if I'm remembering right. And we have tried, but it's just like everything else, things come up, it's not as easy as it looks. And I would like to address the guy that said, "Rob still appears to be sole commissioner." I find that rather insulting. I understand where you're coming from. First of all, you have to understand the three-person board. You have a commission chair and two post-commissioners, and they're very different roles. The commission chair is the CEO of the county. He's responsible for all of the employees and operations. Now, we can have a say at the department head level, and if you think we don't have a say, I hope these two never talk about how loud I can get in those executive sessions. We are allowed to go in executive sessions, and we can discuss employees, and we have made a lot of changes. We have cut some fat out of the budget, maybe some positions we were able to cut and not replace. I'm really proud of a lot of the things we've done, and my husband on the front row, I know he would love to stand up and tell you how many hours that I'm on my phone at Highland County Business. So I do want you to know, for the $13,000 a year that the two of us get, you're getting such a deal, whether it's us or the people that follow us. But, but you honestly do, you do want this three-person board. There is accountability there. Not saying that Rob didn't do a good job as sole commissioner, but I think it's worked out really well. I think all of us would tell you that. And we do get in and hammer out a lot of things in executive sessions, and I think things, and I appreciate Joe saying that, because in our area, we have been striving to stay on track with what we promised to do. It has not been easy. But then, after saying all of that, let me just say to you that I have heard what you're saying. I have listened to every phone call, I have read every email, and I hear you, I understand you totally. But we have to listen to this, and then we listen to the department heads and their needs, and a lady, I think, sitting right there where Dan Poo lives vocally said, "I want to give the sheriff and public safety what they need," and everybody applauded. Well, you know, we have a great sheriff in Pickens County, great sheriff staff, employees, they're all wonderful. Public safety has taken a beating over the past year or so, and I appreciate them, and appreciate what they do. And yes, there probably are some things that we could all look at, but honestly, you have to know that we can't have it both ways. We can't say, "Give the sheriff everything he wants." Well, there's no money there without a tax increase. So you have to understand what we are dealing with, that you just can't have it both ways. But anyway, thanks for the comment.
And if I may say a few other things, as, as for what we're responsible for here, we have combined a lot of our jobs, we have done away with, with some positions that we've got and combined them, to, to kind of streamline the individuals that we're responsible for. Yes, sir?
I don't know how many people here are Big Canoe. I have an informational question. What portion of the taxes are paid by property owners of Big Canoe?
16 percent.
How many?
16 percent.
16 percent.
One-six?
16.
Okay. Secondly, what are, what do you provide to Big Canoe in terms of services? Three, how many people in the kind of countries are from Big Canoe?
Basically, Big Canoe, the people there choose to be in Big Canoe for superior services. You have...
We have, but what Pickens County has done for the Big Canoe area is the fact that we went and run a, we've got an eight-inch main that was out there, we had tied on the Big Canoe water system to have supply you water, which we've been supplying water to Big Canoe.
Which we paid for, and what else pays for water around the country?
Well, that's, you have your own water service, we're just there to back you up, and you, and you guys sit on those boards, I guess, up there to run your own water system. But there is, they would keep...
That's not way worse.
Well, but you did choose to live behind the gates, and that's true.
Yes, but we want a choice on how much tax we pay. When I paid, the social security went down last year, I don't expect a 14 percent increase on the two properties I have there. I want to pay them. We'll see about that.
Yeah, Joe.
Let me just make one more quick point on the medical, and then I wanted to talk about the sheriff. To the lady that said that, you know, your $12 you have in your salary, the $12 private sector worker does. Every company, since Obamacare came out, has stayed at 30 and under threshold because nobody can afford to give their employees healthcare. So that $12 an hour guy has to walk the gate with all the healthcare, that's the single in the kitchen, with no food tray, to pay a month. And that's happening to a lot of these families, these 42, 43-year-old couples with kids. They have two parts hung out, so if they stay under that 30-hour threshold, they both don't get healthcare. They've got to go to court bill entirely for a whole family. So that's, that's the point I want to make on disparities in healthcare from government to private sector. And then just one other thing on, on Donnie's group. I don't know if everybody was here when Donnie went through it, I guess the morning meeting last week. A lot of what he faces is federal mandates or state mandates, so he doesn't have an option on some of that, but we need local government to push back when they have state or federal mandates of any kind. Government has the, the habit of saying, "If nothing we can do about it, the state paid us," or "The federal government paid us." The only way that they stop shoving stuff down your throat is when you push back. So I'm not saying that Donnie can solve this overnight, I'm not saying that I agree that Donnie needs all the money he needs, but there are federal mandates, and as our government, whoever you are, whether you're judicial commissioners, sheriff, COVID, you guys need to push back on behalf of the taxpayer, because state, federal government are that much further removed, and they just tell you, "Take it out of somebody's pocket." This is what you're going to do. So we need to see that kind of pushback, we need to get our state reps, I don't know if your Jasper's is here, but we need to get state reps working with you guys to push back on stuff that we don't know about.
Is there a chance we could get out of that four-tier type, or what did you call it?
We have tried for years. Even the mayor of Jasper, we've all went down there and tried to argue with DCA over the tier four status. What they base that on is, number one, is the amount, when, when the feds come in here and do a survey every 10 years, do a population census, part of that survey is your salary, or what, what you got invested, what you've made all your life, that's part of that census. So what happens, in our opinion, it skews the numbers. And, and, and a lot of, a lot of you guys sitting here have been blessed over the years. You've done well in business, you've made some good money, but the federal government counts that. But what happens is, when you have, have a group that has made a lot of money, those numbers go against groups on the other side of the county that haven't done, done so well. So, but, but everybody's thrown in the same pot, it's averaged out, it's based on the income. So that's why you get into a tier four status. Yes, Steve? Yes, Steve?
All right, well, I promise I was going to be quiet, but I can't do it. Instead of throwing rocks, throw solutions. You throw me into your budget for a new tractor with blue mar, two new service vehicles, two new ambulances.
We throwed it in the preliminary, but they sure haven't looked at all that yet.
All right, so, let's think about something. We spent a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on a new dump truck, right?
Yeah, because I went...
Why didn't we buy a new?
Because we couldn't find one with warranty on it that would hold up, the problem we had at the time. We tried.
Wait, 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 I'm not, I'm not...
I'm, 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 go ahead.
There's no need that we can't buy those vehicles that are needed. Not saying they're not needed, but we don't need to go out and spend brand-new vehicles.
Well, what, Steve, I'd recommend to anybody else here, these budget hearings are open to the public. Please come in when the, when the sheriff's budget comes, comes before the commissioners, when, when the judicial comes before the commissioners, when all that comes for you, you're more than welcome to be there.
Well, the word on the street this week is that, that they're moving items, line items, out of one line item to cover for over expenditure in another line item, like on vehicles that they spend.
We can save a lot of money.
Let's say that they budget forty thousand dollars or whatever on a vehicle, then they go spend sixty, they're moving it out of another line item to cover that. Has that took place? Does anybody know that's just the word on the street?
They can do that with budget transfers.
They can do that with... So, they've been doing that. Do you, do you know of any that's happened this year like that?
Yes.
Would you care to tell us what's happened?
The, the people that the sheriff purchased was not budgeted. So, when he moved money around in his budget to cover that.
To cover a new vehicle? That wasn't in the budget?
I didn't hear you, what?
Is this on?
It's on.
The money, the money for the vehicle that you bought was not in the budget originally. So, we did, you did a budget transfer to, to cover that, right?
I don't remember if we actually had it budgeted in there at all, but I thought we had it.
Yeah, is Jeff here?
I don't see Jeff anywhere.
Yeah.
But I know we do move money within our budget.
Yeah, they're allowed to do budget transfers.
He didn't change that one.
He didn't change the bottom.
We changed the bottom line.
But what I'm getting at, did it take money out of maintenance and repairs?
No.
Donnie, would you like to, I want to, I want to move this meeting on. Donnie, you want to say anything before I proceed on? We will, all right, one more question, go ahead.
I just have another one to comment. I noticed where the valuation for motor vehicles dropped by twelve million four hundred and five thousand dollars this year.
Yes, sir.
That's because the people were so poor that they can't afford a new vehicle.
No, that, that, that's not true.
What is the truth?
The truth is that the T...
It's dropped by twelve million.
If you let me, Sharon, you want to explain it or you don't want me to explain it? Listen, listen, guys.
The TAVT, now, when you buy a vehicle, instead of paying an ad-honor tax on the vehicle, you pay a one-time fee, a TAVT fee. And once you pay that, as long as you own that vehicle, you pay twenty dollars on your, if you don't pay any more taxes, a twenty-dollar fee. The cause of the ad-honor tax being done away with, motor vehicle value came down. Or not gained, but they did, they, ad-honor tax went away and it's caused a decrease in motor vehicle. And that's why...
Well, this is the motor vehicle valuation.
Cars don't go in the digest anymore. Cars go in the digest, they came off.
I think all I'd like to say is that as a resident of Piggins County, I would just like to see the employees pick up more of the increases to their costs so that the county taxpayer doesn't have to pick up our increased cost and your increased cost. And that seems fair to me.
And please, when we have these budget hearings, we'll be glad. You're invited to come when these budget hearings get started.
We're having a vote on the taxes, the increases.
We're, we're voting on the twenty, twenty-sixteen budget and possible increase on the twenty-seventeen.
What we need is the working sector don't have time to come to all these meetings, it's really hard. We're hoping our elected officials are watching out for us. We can't stop what we're doing, we're always using more outbeating. You know, and if, if we stop what we're doing, we sure can't afford to pay our taxes. It's the reason we're hiring y'all to do the job for us, but you've got to stay under budget. When you get off the budget, we can't stand you. And we sure can't, it takes working more and more and more out. And like you say, you call it what you want to, it's not adding ad-honor taxes, a VAVT, a PAVT type. That just means you give it all upfront, it's printed out over ten years, you keep the car. Mine's an old six, thirty-five thousand miles. I definitely didn't need a new vehicle, or at least a better one, but it's not going to happen. It's used for years. You know, it's not fun when you pull out on the road and you're trampaging and slipping.
Yes, I just want to say one thing. We all have to live within our budget. Our wife, when they go to the grocery store, they pay what your wife did. And our income doesn't go up, so why should the counties go up? I mean, we've lived the same amount in the county for four or five years. I've lived on my budget for all of my life. Why can't the county live on theirs?
Yes, sir.
This may be good, I streets fixed, I've lived in Piggins County for ten years, there hasn't been anybody else fixing the puddles and this stuff. I call here in the town, what are we doing to cover that area?
I agree with you at the meeting, we'll talk about that. All right, I, I have no, I don't know.
Mr. John, I've got a quick comment to make about the census. When you do the census, don't put down the income, that'll get the tier change. All I answer on the census is my name, my address, and there's two people living in this house over sixty-five. I do not put an income down. So, when you fill one out, leave it blank, there's nothing they can do about it.
Just make a quick announcement. Just two parts, simple question. One is, will the full voting commission have access to this video? And secondly, is the, with the ad-honor going away on an annual basis as was described for one time, was that not budgeted for?
We have, we have absorbed it, as we have done in our area that we're, that we have cut back on the last two years, we have absorbed that, that loss in the ad-honor through, through our area that we're responsible for. The issue we had is the state, through, through our representatives, promised us that they would make the counties hold when they took a hit. We haven't received a check yet. We were one of the few counties, small counties, that had three, three dealerships in here. Everything went to TAVT, you don't collect sales tax anymore and you don't, don't do the ad-honor. So, yeah, Piggins County took a hit because we were selling a lot, a lot of cars.
Were all counties not re-merged, the difference?
I have no, I can't speak for all counties, I can speak for ours. Yes, sir.
Yet we're still the sixteenth richest county, county in Georgia?
One of the eighteenth, yes. Well, one of the eighteenth, but yes.
One of the eighteenth. But it sounds like we're all broke or whatever.
That's why I said don't put income down.
I don't even pay taxes yet. We are not giving me anything to look for. See, now, to the first part, will the full voting commission have access to, do they view these videos? And, and if not, when is the full board?
We are, we are the full, you're the full, it isn't the full board here.
So, you're, everyone who's voting is here.
That's correct. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started on the county meeting tonight, it's after five-thirty. We need to get, get up and going.